Great, straightened out boys.
Yep.
Hours. Who's missing?
Good evening and welcome to the Marquette City Commission meeting for Monday, May 14th, 2012. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Protam DePietro.
Here.
Commissioner Neme.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Stenage.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Kivala. Here. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing that, Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Support.
Commissioner Schneider supports. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Announcements tonight, I'm going to read through our boards and committees because we've really made some ground on that and we're hoping to get a few more. Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, we have an opening. The Investment Advisory Board, one opening. The Local Officers Compensation Commission, four openings. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, three openings. Prescott Park Advisory Committee, one opening. The Sister City Advisory Committee, two openings. And the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, we have one opening. With that, we are going to get into our first agenda item and the first is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2012-13 Budget and General Appropriations Act. City Clerk, do you want to read the background?
Yes, Your Honor. The Commission held budget hearings on April 11th, 12th, 17th, and 18th of 2012. Tonight, a public hearing is being scheduled to receive public comment on the proposed 2012-13 budget. Following this input, the Commission should consider any changes it wishes to make to the budget. Fiscal effect, a balanced budget has been presented. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt the fiscal year 2012-13 Budget and General Appropriations Act. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone is wishing to address the Commission on this issue, you could stand at the lectern and give your name and address. Nobody wants to talk to us. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and we'll go to discussion or a motion. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will move to adopt the fiscal year 2012-2013 Budget and General Appropriations Act.
Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Stonehouse made the motion. Commissioner Stonehouse, any additional comments?
Only additional, only comment would be we've spent an awful lot of time and an awful lot of meetings and a huge number of hours going through the budget and I think very great and in close detail. I don't know that we have much discussion to have tonight on it. I think it's a good budget. I think it's one that is austere. I think it certainly reflects the very great opportunity or our great opportunity and willingness to try and pare down the budget to the greatest extent we can and to continue that trend as we have, I believe, over the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Also, I'd really like to thank the department heads, all the staff, employees, city manager, Bill Fida, with this, all the work sessions we had with the budgets. This is probably one of the most efficient, tightest budget we had in many, many years and yet we're still going to be moving forward with infrastructures and other jobs that have to be completed. And we're doing all this without any idea of what's going to be coming from the federal government or the state. So I'm really pleased with what we ended up with and I'd like to thank everybody again. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Commissioner Ryan?
I guess I would just say it, this ends with such a, I don't know what the right word is, but it's so quietly.
Anti-climatic.
Yes, you know, but it's, as Commissioner Stonehouse pointed out, we've gone through a tremendous number of meetings, looked at a lot of data and presentations from many of the staff. And we come here tonight to adopt budget for the city for the next fiscal year and actually there's no one here who wants to ask a question or say anything about it. So I guess it must mean we're doing all right.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stenage?
Thank you, Your Honor. This will mark my third budget process that I've been privileged to sit in on and much has been said about the amount of background information and due diligence and review and reassessment that we've gone through. There are some issues in the budget that at least I'm not happy with. But the most frustrating part about, the most frustrating issue in the whole process is that I think we had, if I'm not mistaken, one person make one public comment with regard to one specific issue in all of the public hearings that we had with the budget. And I still contend that we carry too much debt. I still contend that we, I think we've made some great strides with regard to where we've cut and where we've become a little bit more fiscally prudent and I very much appreciate that. I think the trend is in the right direction at the end of the day. There are some things in there that I wish were still pulled out and I think it's icing on the cake, so to speak. But again, the frustrating part is no one has spoken out about it pro or con. Fees have gone up again this year across the board. They've gone up every year since I've sat here. Yeah, we've, in essence, balanced the budget outside of the capital equipment and capital construction projects. We balance it outside of that. But it's just so hard to defend the electorate's wallet when the electorate doesn't care. And with that, I guess I'm probably going to actually vote for my first budget in three years, only because nobody else seems to care. So I'm going to vote for it because since the populace has said that they're not against it, they must be for it, using the old political thought process. And so I appreciate the opportunity. I do appreciate the staff's attention to detail and their willingness to, maybe not their willingness, but their patience in dealing with my questions and hopefully it works. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. The comment that Commissioner DePietro mentioned that this is kind of a, I don't know if he used the, I use the word challenging, this is probably the most challenging budget we had. He kind of touched on that and I think it was probably more challenging for staff than it was for us. They had to present a balanced budget with the revenues and the uncertainties available. And we've addressed some of our infrastructure needs, but the last couple of years when we've reduced the debt and we must do so, we're really pushing important projects down the road further because the projects don't go away, they're still there, there's still streets that need to be repaired, there's still 100-year-old pipes in the ground that need to be repaired. And I guess I'd like to see us somehow in the future, maybe take a more critical look at our operating budget and free up some of that money to do those infrastructure projects without bonding for it. And, you know, there are some projects obviously we have to bond for and you can only get so much money out of an operating budget, but I think, you know, in the future, we're going to have to do that. In the future, I think we're going to see many more challenges. The state is playing with the personal property tax, which we're going to see possibly a reduction or not, a complete replacement. There's the We Energies on the horizon somewhere possibly and who knows what other things come around. So probably in the future, we're going to have challenging, more challenging budgets, but staff did a good job this year, but we, you know, we have to look at our budgets in the future and, you know, and we speak about fees, since probably 2006, we've raised the water rates 80%. And each year, we increase it. We still have low utility fees compared to many other communities, but it's an easy thing for us to do rather than raise taxes. We raise fees and, you know, endemic with utilities being enterprise funds, that's where the money has to come from because we're not going to subsidize it with tax dollars. But, you know, it would be nice if we could take a critical look at our operating budget, maybe get some of those monies out there and maybe eliminate the needs for some of the rate increases that we have to do year after year. But I'll support the budget.
All right, thank you. Obviously, I'm going to support this as well. I'll tell you, the staff did a remarkable job this year. Gary Simpson, our CFO, many sleepless nights and we appreciate it, Gary. A lot of times, with very little turnaround time, we had meetings that were back-to-back on a couple of occasions. All the department heads really did an excellent job. Couple of things in this budget that I want to point out. The city has decreased capital outlay expenses this year by over 60%. Costs for supplies and services have dropped 8%. The city's bonded indebtedness continues to decrease, or the past two years, the average annual bond debt has decreased by roughly 40%. The city still maintains one of the highest bond ratings in the state. The millage rate is unchanged since 2006. The statutory revenue sharing that we always talk about up here, that's the money the state gives us or should give us. That number's been reduced every year as long as I've been here. That number this year, we think, is going to be about $308,000. Because of all the strings attached in Lansing and the uncertainty with that, we took zero of those dollars into account to balance this budget. If that comes to us, which we hope it will, that will help, maybe help fund some other projects that we need. For the past year, the city has reduced operating expenses by approximately $300,000 without impacting services. So that's pretty impressive, I think, and it really, it starts with the staff, it starts with our city manager, who's really looked at a lot of these different things from a different pair of eyes. Just in the last few days, we've switched over to a new IT cloud system with Google that does a whole lot more than we ever did before for a whole lot less money. And it's that type of thinking that really has allowed us to make these strides. So I will happily support this budget, so. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, we have a presentation on the Warrior Relief Fund by Liz Mathie. Welcome, Liz.
Hi, this is Derek Mann, he's my partner on the whole project, so. We just, thank you for letting us come in and talk. We just, I came here last year, probably right about, around this time. And for those of you who don't know what the Warrior Relief Fund is, it's just a, it's a fund that helps soldiers and families for any sort, any kind of service member that gets injured, killed, the money stays in Marquette County. And the idea of the Warrior Relief Fund is to make sure the funds very easily.
Accessible.
Thank you, accessible. So that way, you don't have to fill out a bunch of paperwork, you don't have to go outside of the local area for Wounded Warrior. Wounded Warrior is a great program, however, we wanted to do something for the county. So this is the second year we'll be doing the walk and the second year that will actually be in action. We don't have our nonprofit status yet, still working on it. But we do have the walk coming up on, or May 28th and Derek's going to tell you about that and we'll get out of your hair, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, as Liz said, Memorial Day morning, we're going to be gathering at Mattson Lower Harbor. We, last year, we had roughly 200 people for the walk, this year, we're hoping to double that. We've been really pushing this walk for months now, through various avenues. From Mattson Lower Harbor, we're going to be walking to just behind the dome, small presentation there and then everybody heading back. And ideally, you know, there's no real agenda for the walk other than everybody who's there coming together to understand the real meaning of Memorial Day and it's not necessarily just a day to enjoy off from your work schedule, but more, you know, understanding, you know, why we're, why we're all there. And also, you know, to spread word of what the WRF is and, you know, future events that we may hold and just get a chance to have as many people as possible get together and enjoy a Memorial Day morning together, so.
All right. Well, thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
See you guys there.
You bet. Okay, next up, we have a presentation on the Investment Advisory Board by Chairman Sam Bennett. Welcome, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Prepared to discuss the Investment Advisory Board. Before I do, are there any questions or anything that the Commission had questions before we begin? Nope. All right, away we go. The purpose of the Investment Advisory Board is to be in accordance with the Public Act 20 of the Public Acts of 1943, which is to manage the city's public funds. We invest them in a manner which is to provide the highest investment return with maximum security, safety and essentially an ultra-conservative type of investment and also to meet the city's daily cash flow needs, complying with all the local and state ordinances. We're a five-member board. Currently, I'm the chairperson. Dan Emmendorfer is our vice chair, CFO Simpson and Treasurer Giddens also serve. We currently have a vacancy, so that's our most pressing need to the community is looking for folks with a good financial background, particularly in fixed income investments and institutional type investing, as that's more germane to this type of background. Would be replacing a CPA, so certainly a tax background and it would function very well. Our meetings are held quarterly and special meetings called as needed. Last year, we had three regular meetings with two special meetings. No one excused absences from the group. And again, I mentioned that it's managed in accordance with the Public Act 20. And the investment policy statement was first put together in 1997. Late in '07, we began a thorough review of that policy, completed in March of '08 and I'll note that here in a moment. And again, we have a very strict adherence to all statutes. The following page is an overview of the investments as they currently sit. A particular note, which is what everyone wants to know, what is the yield? The portfolio is currently yielding over 1%, which, you know, is not too shabby in these days. I was curious about it and I spoke to CFO Simpson previously and he mentioned that there are two similar-sized municipalities here in the state of Michigan that are yielding 80 and 60 basis points below ours. So we're quite proud of that accomplishment. And of course, the goal is to always review the investment status with a keen eye toward the yield curve and where we might be able to find value, again, sticking with our policy. One of the other functions of the board is the semi-annual review of the special interest rate assessment policy and we recommend payment terms on a bi-annual basis. For 25 years, the city has received the Certificate of Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting, or CAFR, from the Government Finance Officers Association. We're very proud of that. And also, I mentioned the investment policy statement earlier. The timing could not have been better to go into the malaise of '08 and '09, having a nationally recognized investment policy statement, which we were very, very proud of. I believe in March of '08, received the national certification, certificate of excellence from the Association of Public Treasurers of the U.S. and Canada. Again, the only issue that we have is a vacancy, which we'd love to see filled as soon as humanly possible.
All right, thank you, Sam. Do we have any questions? Boy, I don't see any. You got off easy tonight, Sam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again for volunteering. Your background makes you a natural, so again, thank you. All right, next up, we have another presentation and this is an update from the Planning Commission on the City Master Plan. Welcome, sir.
Hello, I'm Taylor Clippe. I am the Chair of the Steering Committee of the Planning Commission and I'm going to try and bring this up and then read something to you verbatim, so get ready for that. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act recommends that the community master plans be reviewed every five years. The Planning Commission began last summer discussing two priorities of addressing the review of the master plan and the completion of the Land Development Code project. The consensus of the Planning Commission at that time was that the plan should be the top priority because the plan is the foundation for the zoning. The plan was adopted well over five years ago and the LDC project was undergoing a significant revision by a consultant at that time. In December of 2011, the Commission undertook the review, to review, the Community Master Plan and the plan review was conducted using an MSU land use series checklist method that produces one of the three poss, these three possible outcomes. The plan stands as it was adopted, the plan should be amended and the plan should be rewritten. The outcome of the checklist review is that the plan should be amended. In January, the Commission performed another checklist exercise to determine which contents of the master plan would need to be addressed in the update and what may be missing from the master plan. With those tasks completed, the Planning Commission authorized staff to draft a notification letter to adjoining jurisdictions and other relevant organizations indicating an intent to conduct an update of the Community Master Plan and the notification was sent out on February 21st of this year. Discussion of how the master plan update would be conducted and a work schedule were outlined in the following month, I actually have a very freshly updated timeline with me. And in the past month, the Planning Commission has developed and approved a public involvement program and schedule and we're actually preparing to get going on those activities this week. So we're actually moving pretty fast on this. At this point, I'll take any questions you guys have.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, Mr. Clippe, can you give us a, just a rough outline of what the upcoming schedule is for the master plan?
There are really two parts of the review. The first piece, the more technical piece, we're dedicating the majority of our work sessions, which is the second monthly meeting each month, to reviewing chunks of the master plan as it stands. Right now, the master plan's pretty good. 2004, we don't feel a lot of the vision, the goal, the general direction of Marquette has changed too much looking at the plan. So what we really want to do is just look through, see if there's pieces in small chunks and very possibly rearrange pieces of the master plan. Right now, it's not the, most of the demographics, which are, we feel should be in the appendix, are in the front. We'd like to kind of change that around just so it's an easier document for people to read if they decide to read the master plan of Marquette. So that's, that's the technical piece and then the other piece is the outreach piece, which we're starting really within the next couple of weeks and we're going to go and myself, co-chair Schaefer, Dave Stentis is going to come along to a number of meetings at certain groups. We're probably going to go see Rotary, we're probably going to go hit some senior citizens' homes. They're a tougher, tougher group to actually get ahold of and we're not going to do a web survey and expect that older citizens are going to be involved with that. There's a survey that's being put out. We're thinking both online and with billing, which should cover as much of the populace as we can. And that's really going to give us an idea of the questions that people care most about and the values that are most important to the citizens of Marquette. And at that point, once we have those kind of amalgamated into a plan, we're going to do a few workshops, three to four, we're not sure how many quite yet, and that will just basically involve citizens sitting down, possibly on specific issues. I think we're going to start broader in the beginning, really talk more about vision, talk about where do you see Marquette 20 years from now? Talk about the rate of change, the pace of change, that sort of thing. We'll probably get more into specifics later on. And from there, in the fall sometime, we expect to have completed a working amendment, at which point we'll probably have some sort of community celebration saying thank you for, you know, to whoever was involved in the process. And we hope to have this thing actually amended and adopted sometime in 2013.
Okay. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you. Now, your meetings are open to the general public.
All of our meetings are open to the general public.
And are you inviting the general public to your master plan in the very near future?
We, that's actually part of the outreach. We're not just inviting people to come see us, we're actually going to go out and get people. We're going to have meetings at the Commons during the day, in the evening. We're going to try and actually cast as wide a net as possible, not just to get people to participate with us in this setting, because this is not everybody's favorite setting to speak and do that sort of thing. So we're going to have some very specific, come talk about the plan, come tell us what you care about. In fact, the surveys that we're sending out are really going to be aimed towards kind of flagging in and maybe raising the hackles on some of the populace and trying to get them passionate about one thing. And if they can come and they're passionate about the one thing, we're going to get a little more participation, just like Commissioner Stenage was talking about. We're really trying to get more community involvement than we have now. So I think in this case, because this is such an important document, it's, it's important not just to say, come here, it's important to go out and get people. And we're going to try and do that to the best of our ability.
Just one more question. You were addressing a 20-year plan that you started looking at. A few years ago, I was looking at some of the 20-year plans from 1947, 1948 for Lake to Market Armory at Lincoln and Wright, the high school and other areas such as that. And you think, you know, 20 years is a long ways away, but it's not. And it takes sometimes 20 years just to get all the ducks in a row, the fundings and everything else so that it is in place when it happens. So like I say, that 20-year plan is excellent. Get the people to buy into it and see what they want Marquette look like in 20 years from now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
You had said that you chose to go with amending the current plan rather than rewriting it and the assumption was that a lot of it's already good. Can you quantify that even further?
Sure. Well, as Commissioner DePietro actually stated, if we did a full master plan reevaluation, it probably would take us five years to do this. In 2004, the new master plan was done with the help of a consultant to the tune of a few hundred thousand dollars, that sort of money isn't in the budget. There's some technical amending that needs to be done, demographics, that sort of thing. Pieces of the master plan that have been accomplished in 2004, the roundabout would actually be one of those, those pieces. So there's a, there are a number of things that made doing a full revamp really too much, too large of an, of an issue. And when you look at the values in 2004, people were talking about walkability, they were talking about keeping the waterfront publicly accessible and beautiful. And when you look through the value statements and really try and kind of flinch out all the other stuff and get to the, I think, the values, we all agree that things haven't changed that much. The numbers are the things that need to change and some of the larger pieces, I think the heartwood's probably going to be addressed in a little more, in a little more detail than, say, you know, bike paths. I'm sure that that's already, you know, raised somebody's hackles there, but I think there are going to be pieces that we look at more specifically. pieces that we look at more specifically, but in general, the plan looks pretty good. It just needs an update, because these things are supposed to be updated every, you know, five years at least.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'm going to ask if it's possible if you can begin to address those, some of the features of the Land Development Code, in that we do have some critical items that are out there floating on the horizon that are going to come in and bite us, and we do not currently have a way to defend against them. And I am particularly interested, for example, in cell towers and how they're addressed, and windmills. If, for example, we had had the Land Development Code in place and position, we would not have had the great public fight we had on the Citadel project.
Sure.
So, and I, you know, realizing you're standing in a swamp and you can't drain the swamp because you're killing the alligators around you with all of the workload that you have, I do think it would be a great consideration and a great service you could do for the city if you could identify those critical features of the Land Development Code and address those in the most expeditious manner that we can, so we can defend ourselves against these particular threats, and there may well be others that you guys can recognize more than I just mentioned, and then move forward with the master plan review. Thank you.
I think, just to address that quickly, I think that once the surveys come back, the responses will be broken down into, in different areas, there's probably going to be transportation we'll have to deal with, and these workshops might end up being steered towards specific things, and there won't be...they're very well, might be one that's directly looking at land use development, that sort of thing.
Not directed that way, but this way. Is that something that we can more appropriately direct the Planning Commission to do? I mean, I think these are items that are so critical to us as a community that they be addressed in a rapid and expeditious fashion that they just simply can't be put back as part of something else. Again, with the evidence of what happened with the Citadel, simply because the Planning Commission did not do the work in a timely fashion and put us into that debacle. And I see these other issues of having very significant threat to the city that can be addressed as individuals without having them part of a larger planning process and a final document. That's what I'm hearing. Thank you.
Well, I think we could tackle some of those through ordinances through...but I guess to steer the master plan, I think the people need to steer the master plan, and we need to implement it.
There's a difference between the master plan and the Land Development Code.
Correct.
The Land Development Code, of course, being those ordinances, and that's what I'm suggesting, that we steer them to do quickly and expeditiously because of the threat that they present to the city, and then allow the process to go forward with the master plan. And we may well end up amending some of these more rapidly accomplished ordinances later on, once the master plan's complete, but I do think we need to have some defenses here, and we frankly do not. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Clip? Seeing none. Thank you for coming tonight. Very enlightening. All right, next up, number five. We have a proclamation for Founder's Day, May 18th, 2012. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas in the early morning of May 18th, 1849, when not a ripple disturbed the glass-like surface of Lake Superior, a group of hardy adventurers approached what is now known as the city of Marquette, and whereas, excuse me, leading the team were Robert Gravert and Peter White, who days before left Mackinac Island on the steamer Tecumseh, and due to high waves, were forced to abandon their ship at Sault Ste. Marie and continue their journey on a smaller vessel. And whereas, continuing their journey with the assistance of seven hardy oarsmen, they overcame the strong rapids at the Sioux and continued along the south shore of Lake Superior, and whereas the virgin forests, rock cliffs, and abundant wildlife made an impressive sight as the party moved along the lakeshore toward its destination...excuse me. And whereas, the large Mackinac approached from the direction of Shot Point, and with steady strokes of its oarsmen, its nine days of coasting would be ended, and the new El Dorado would be reached. And whereas, as the boat struck the beach on May 18th and or around the area now known as Founder's Landing, a tall, powerful, swarthy individual with a strong face and form extended greetings with a cheer and hearty welcome, and seizing the boat's painter, assisted to lift the craft high and dry. And whereas, this individual was known as Charles Kabogum, chief of the Ojibwe tribe, who along with his wife Charlotte, daughter of the great Ojibwe chief Majigizik, extended the hospitality of their lodge to provide for food and rest for the weary explorers. Now therefore, I, John P. Keevila, mayor of the city of Marquette, do hereby proclaim May 18th, 2012, as Founder's Day in the city of Marquette, and in honor of its 163rd anniversary, thus urge the citizens of our community to join together in ceremonies and activities to honor our founders, adopted this 14th day of May 2012, and sign, John P. Keevila, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have a proclamation for Public Works Recognition Week, May 20th through 26th, 2012.
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as waters, water sewers, streets and highways, public buildings and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, John P. Keevila, mayor of the city of Marquette, do hereby proclaim May 20th through 26th, 2012, as Public Works Recognition Week in the city of Marquette. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, dated this 14th day of May 2012, and sign, John P. Keevila, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Dave. Two more to go. Proclamation, number seven, for Emergency Medical Services Week, May 20th through 26th.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas, emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care and help to those in crisis 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical service providers have traditionally served as the vital link in America's healthcare system, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of four responders, first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, rescue specialists, dispatchers, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas the residents and visitors of our community benefit daily from the dedication of these highly trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating an Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, John P. Keevila, mayor of the city of Marquette, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through 26th, 2012, as Emergency Medical Services Week. We encourage the community to observe this week and actively support our local EMS organizations, dated this 14th day of May 2012, and sign, John P. Keevila, Mayor.
All right, Dave. One more. Waterfront Safety Week, which is May 21st through 25th.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas, Marquette is home to the Great Lake Superior along with many inland lakes, streams, rivers, creeks, and ponds, and whereas these waterways serve as our area's most significant resource, and whereas water safety and drowning prevention education is imperative for Marquette's citizens and visitors, and whereas numerous people have lost their lives in drowning accidents each year, claiming the lives of children and adults alike, and whereas during this week and throughout the summer months, we encourage everyone to take extra care near any body of water, especially along the shores of Lake Superior. And whereas, the city of Marquette has allocated significant resources to improve beach safety and waterfront education programs along with our partners throughout the community, and whereas the public is reminded to flip, float, and follow rip currents and longshore currents when caught in these Lake Superior currents. Now therefore, I, John P. Keevila, mayor of the city of Marquette, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 25th, 2012, as Waterfront Safety Week, adopted this 14th day of May 2012, and sign, John P. Keevila, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Dave. Onto boards and committees, and we're supposed to welcome a new member, Wes Pernsteiner, and I don't see Wes here tonight, so we'll make sure he gets his pin, but Wes is the newest member of the Downtown Development Authority, and we welcome him onto that board. We've got two appointments here. Samuel Crowley, Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee, with a term ending 4/113, and David Kingston, Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, for a term ending 6/113. Commissioners, Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, I move that we accept both appointments as read.
Thank you. Do we have support?
Second motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Neme supports. Any comments, Commissioner Schneider?
No, I'm just happy to see people step up and fill some of the vacancies that we have.
Commissioner Neme?
I echo Commissioner Schneider's com-
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right, public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve the time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Anyone wishing to speak?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. April 30th, a traffic advisory board member wanted a street light on Lakeshore Boulevard and Wright Street. Along the cullin', he did not feel that extra stoplights and 30-second waits were bad things. That's exactly what a lot of us moved up here to get away from, and no lights that close to our northeast lakeshore. After an April 30th comment, a critic accused me of abusing the right to free speech, and he called my comments rubbish without daring to address a single detail, which is a tactic that he learned from the Commission. Your refusal to answer for yourselves and to address specific details creates this reaction. During the intermission, a man with the kindest intentions notated three paragraphs of my first two comments as insulting. Perhaps the seven nimrods was a bit much, but maybe you had to be here in 1998 to believe it for yourselves. My tactic is to hold individuals accountable by correlating the past to the present and to never forget the ongoing pattern of recurrent mistakes that's transpired in here. I truly apologize to anyone in the audience who's bothered by this. Plenty of others compliment my approach, so I'm standing up for them as well as the next generation of children, and for the thousands of residents who are out enjoying Marquette, not even aware that this meeting is in session. They pay their taxes, and they live here for the scenic beauty, so they're equally entitled to have Marquette's special character retained. These meetings are not intended for entertainment but to conduct the business of the city. For those who balk at the fundamentals of a democracy, including three current members, there's an endless choice of movies and other shows to watch. I agree that freedom of speech shouldn't allow us to lie up here or to lose control of our emotions. You just don't like the way I string my words together. You've been urged before to show that I'm generally wrong on land use issues, and I'd resigned voluntarily. To date, there are no takers. If I'm wrong, you can get rid of me easily, or if I'm generally right, then let us hold individuals accountable per the examples on record. As I sat down after an April 30th comment, a developer accused me of acting rude. A half hour later, on the Hartwood item, he blatantly expected more speaking time than those before him had received. How rude is that? You had to remind him three times. Odd from a city of 22,000, this area's two largest developers so happened to serve on the biased Hartwood Committee. I'm endeavoring to preserve Marquette's unique character, but you'll probably whip down more trees and block more views and add more stoplights and propose more subdivisions that eat away at our outskirts.
Thank you, Mr. Veritol. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Your Honor, gentlemen of the Commission, I'm Matt Gujon. I'm general manager of the Marquette Food Co-op, and I'm present to answer any questions you may have and take any commentary relative to Agenda Item Number 13 for you, which is the Marquette Food Co-op's request for the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district at 500 and 502 West Washington, the two buildings we purchased for our expansion. In short, the commercial rehabilitation district freezes the taxable value of the properties at their current value for a period of one to 10 years, and if I'm not mistaken, it is at the Commission's discretion if the Commission chooses to establish such a district, the length of time of this certificate of exemption. Certain taxes are abated, except for taxes relative to schools. What this does for the Marquette Food Co-op is it assists us in returning to profitability after this sizable step that our organization is taking, and it allows us to further invest in our community. As you may or may not know, the Marquette Food Co-op, a privately held organization by 15% of the population of our community, often acts as though it were a civic organization. So, if there are any questions, please, I'm ready and willing to answer.
All right, Matt. When we get to that item on the agenda, if we have questions, we'll call you back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Amy Conover of 419 North Fourth Street here in Marquette, and I would like to speak briefly regarding the topic that Matt just brought up on the commercial rehabilitation district. I have seen how well the area of Bariga Street has blossomed, as I believe the Food Co-op was a cornerstone in the rehabilitation of that area, and I think this...I would really like to support the effort to rehabilitate the area they're requesting. I think it's...I've noticed that there are a lot of new businesses going in in that area already. There is a lot that needs to be done, though, and I think that what the Food Co-op brings to that region would be valuable long into the future, and I think that helping in any way we can to bring another part of our city and our community to a higher value, higher standard would be advisable.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission? All right, seeing none. City Clerk, let's move to the consent agenda. If you want to read the items off.
Yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the April 30th, 2012, regular and special commission meetings. Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $268,051. Item C, schedule a public hearing for May 29th, 2012, to consider ordinance number 591, an amendment to adjust water rates effective July 1, 2012. Item D, schedule a public hearing for May 29th, 2012, to consider ordinance number 592, an amendment to adjust sewer rates effective July 1, 2012. Item E, schedule a public hearing for May 29th, 2012, to consider ordinance number 593, an amendment to adjust stormwater rates effective July 1, 2012. Item F, schedule a public hearing for May 29th, 2012, to consider approval of a liquor license transfer application from Soemark, Inc. And Item G, schedule a public hearing for May 29th, 2012, to consider rezoning the property located at 905 Lakeshore Boulevard from multiple family residential to planned unit development. And Item H, approve the fireworks permit for the Marquette Fourth of July celebration.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Nope.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. First item up, number 11, report and recommendation from the city manager, fiscal year 2012, capital improvement bonds. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, in order to start the process of issuing capital improvement bonds for FY12 projects, a resolution must be approved that will authorize- a resolution must be approved that will authorize notice of intent to be published. The notice of intent serves as a 45-day referendum notice in accordance with Public Act 34. This Public Act states that if 10% of the registered voters of the city file a referendum petition within 45 days of publication of the notice, then bonds cannot be issued without voter approval. The resolution also authorizes that the city may reimburse itself for expenditures made prior to the actual issuance of the bonds. This language is needed in order to comply with federal tax laws for tax-exempt bonds. Projects approved in the FY12 budget to be bonded are as follows. McClellan Avenue, $800,000 approved net of grants. East Washington Street, $148,000 net of grants. Wilson Street, Forest Park Drive and Mildred Avenue, $1,093,881 approved. Street Improvement Program, Garfield and Mountain, $1,151,000. Mattson Park Lift Station, $243,000 approved. Sanitary sewer lateral replacements, $202,000. Sanitary sewer slip lining, $400,000, for a total of $4,037,881. Fiscal effect, a debt service schedule would be produced when the bonds are issued. Recommendation, approve a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,500,000 for capital improvements and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4.5 million for capital improvements and authorize city clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Commissioner Neme? Commissioner Stonehouse, comments?
As with the overall budget, we spent an awful lot of time going over these particular requirements, and I think it, it all has been well said and explained. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
I just have a question. I guess we're authorizing $4.5 million worth of bonds, and we've got less than $4.1 million of the projects fully needed. I realize there's probably some additional costs associated with letting the bonds, but do we really need to go to $4.5 million, or let's see, maybe Gary can enlighten us?
That is correct. The more accurate amount will be closer to $4.2 million. Just at the time, the bond attorneys were writing the resolution, we weren't quite sure the exact amount of the bonds. And I just want to point out, too, these are the bonds for the current year budget, the FY1112, and not for the budget you just approved, so I know sometimes there's fiscal year confusion, so I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page here.
So the $4.5 million just coincides with the, the numbers in the resolution that was prepared?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we'll probably only let about $4.2 million?
Correct. We will only issue what we exactly need, so it will be closer to $4.2 million.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding audit services contract for fiscal years 12, 13, and 14. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, four responses were received to city RFPs for audit services for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2012, 13, and 14. Proposals were received on May 1, 2012, and evaluated by a review team consisting of the city treasurer, chief financial officer, staff accountant, and a professor of accounting at NMU. The proposals were evaluated based upon technical criteria, experience, and cost. The results were tabulated and bid amounts were submitted with Anderson Takman scoring the highest with 326.48 points and a bid of $101,325. Fiscal effect, the three-year cost of the contract is $101,325. Sufficient funds have been budgeted for the FY12 portion. Recommendation, award a three-year contract to Anderson Takman and Company of Marquette in the amount of $101,325 for audit services. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Schneider?
I'll move that we award a three-year contract to Anderson Takman and Company of Marquette in the amount of $101,325 for the audit services.
All right, do we have support? Nobody wants to support this? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will support the resolution.
Everyone sleepy tonight? Okay. Commissioner Schneider, any comments?
Seems like we're just trying to drag this out to match the last meeting. No, this seems pretty, pretty standard. The, the fee seems a little high to me, but it's definitely competitive with everything and not bad.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Question, if I can, of staff. As we, as we look at the pricing and the relative ranking, Anderson Takman was not the low bidder on the project, and I know an evaluation was performed of the different folks who did bid, and I wonder if you could speak for a minute as to how that evaluation kind of sorted things out. Thank you.
Sure. We evaluate based on really three criteria: technical, experience, and cost. We have 40 points allocated to technical, 35 to experience, and 25 to cost, so a perfect bid, in our view, would be 100 points. The results that you see on the agenda supplement for Anderson Takman, 326.4A is the total of all four votes. And out of all three, out of all four people who rated Anderson Takman finished number one and finished number two, and the one that didn't vote them number one. So really, it's just, not just cost-based, but we try to lean heavy on the technical and the experience side. The low bidder, even though it was a good bid, when we did some checking around, they usually just do smaller township-type audits. We would be by far their biggest audit, and we just didn't feel like it would best serve us at this time, and we just felt like Anderson Takman was the best value for us.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioner St. Ange?
Hey, Gary, do we typically do this in three-year contracts?
Yes, sir. Well, ever since I've been here, it's been three years.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other comments? Well, I, I'm glad Anderson Takman was the top point getter. There's familiarity with them. I think they've done a great job for us in the years past, so, not to mention they're a local firm, so that's always appreciated. So with that, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding possible commercial rehabilitation district for 500 and 502 West Washington Street. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, on April 13, 2012, Matt Gujon, general manager of the Organic Food Cooperative of Marquette, met with city administration to discuss the possibility of establishing their recently purchased property as a commercial rehabilitation district. The guidelines for such a designation are established under Public Act 210 of 2005. Under this act, tax exemptions are provided, are approved for a term of one to 10 years as determined by the local unit of government. The property taxes are based upon the previous year's taxable value prior to rehabilitation. The tax value is then frozen for the duration of the certificate and exempts the new investment from the local taxes. The school operating tax and the state education tax are still levied on the new investment. Land and personal property cannot be abated under this act. This is the first time the city commission will decide whether or not to declare property as a commercial rehabilitation district. If approved, the city commission, if approved by the city commission, a copy of the resolution adopting the district would be provided to the county. Within 28 days, the county could reject the establishment of the district. If the district is established, the property owner would then apply to the city for a Commercial Rehabilitation Act exemption. If approved by the city, this would then be advanced to the state tax commission for consideration. The MFC has indicated they would also apply for tax relief through the Downtown Development District. Fiscal effect, excuse me, currently, the tax received for the property is $20,363.61. The CRD abatement would be approximately $7,697.10, resulting in an annual tax collection of $12,666.51. Once improvements are made to the property, the annual capture during the exemption period is projected to be approximately $36,000 per year with an annual tax abatement of $45,450. Recommendation, schedule a public hearing for May 29, 2012 to consider establishing a commercial rehabilitation district at 500 and 502 West Washington Street. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. And Commissioners, I'll remind you that Mr. Gujon is here. If you have questions for him, we can call him back up. Commissioner St. Ange?
Thank you. I have a question for staff, I guess. I'm curious, based on the background, this issue was brought to the city staff approximately a month ago, and here it sits in front of us as a tax abatement, basically. I'm curious as to what criteria city staff is using to bring these to us. Is really anybody out there who might be investing in property likely to come in front of us? Or are there special criteria here that are unknown to the general population? I mean, might we see the Delft Theater here at some point in their future? Or any other improvements that are done on real property here in town?
City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's no special criteria. People come and ask for these kind of abatements, and it's, they come before the commission as they're pursued by staff with the applicant and then with the, the follow-up interest.
Commissioner Ryan?
I have a question, too, and I do support the Food Co-op. I think they do good things in our community. But reading through this, you know, I'm more familiar with tax abatements where the, the tax on the improvements are abated. In fact, that's the way the introduction reads. But taxable value is then frozen for the duration of the certificate and exempts the new investment from local taxes. But then further down, it says their taxes are going to be reduced for some period of time. And I guess I'm just trying to get my arms around that. I guess I'm more familiar with, with abatements where, where they're not paying the increased tax, not where their existing taxes are reduced. Is that correct, and what, what is the rationale?
The, the presentation in the background is mechanically what will happen. In the fiscal effect, we were trying to give an approximation of what the economic impact would be if approved. And so what you, what you see here will be the taxable value of the property if the district is established. And so the existing value of the property will be frozen, will collect taxes against that amount minus the, the two different taxes levied mentioned there. The value will increase for whatever period of time that the commission decides to provide for the abatement. At the end of that period of time, the value will be adjusted to the market value of the property, and then the taxes will be collected against that value. So, so essentially what happens is no improvements are taxed during the period that the abatement's been allowed, and the value of the property is established at the time of the abatement.
Yes, and I, and I'm familiar with that, but, but this, this implies something differently. Are we now collecting $20,000 in property tax on those properties?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
So we're saying their, their taxes are going to be reduced by $7,000?
That, that would be the amount of tax that would be coming from the school operating tax, state education tax, Dennis, am I correct?
Yeah, there, it's basically a proration program, and the reduction that you see is, it goes along with, because you're dealing with two things here. This proration or exemption applies to your frozen value and also to the improvement. So if you look at it like two abatements, it's confusing.
It is to me.
Very, very confusing. So I, the easiest way to try and think about it is that there's going to be kind of like two abatements here. Okay, you're freezing the value, and, and you, that's one thing that you work with, but that frozen value also has an abatement against it as well as the increased investment for a period of X number of years. That has an abatement associated with it also. But the way the numbers really work out, it's not your traditional abatement that you're used to where people just don't pay taxes on it for X amount of time. It's actually a proration of value. There's a formula, and it's, it's, it's done across the board for all of the jurisdictions. Clears mud?
Yeah, because, you know, typically, the kind of abatement I'm familiar with is you freeze the value, and then somebody invests a lot of money, and you encourage them to do that, but you give them an abatement on the increase for some period of time. But now you're saying they also get, under this plan,
It's kind of-
Their existing taxes reduced.
I, I think what's-
How do we make up for that? Where does that?
What, what's really throwing everyone for a loop is the, is the term "abatement" and what we're used to. So duly noted to the legislature that next time they do something in, in a law and call it an abatement, they ought to redefine abatement, because that's essentially what they did here. But, and the traditional sense of abatement, we're really getting hung up on terminology, I think. Really should be called a proration.
Even if we don't call it an abatement, we're basically saying that their taxes will be reduced for some period of time. What would, what would be the rationale for that?
The, the way the, the rationale in the act, okay, it still has to be a commission discussion on whether it's worthy rationale for the community, but the intent in the act is that there is anticipated new investment in the property. Therefore, reduction in current taxes and also the, the, the time period where you can capture some of those taxes on the new investment is done to encourage the newer, or the more investment in the property. So in essence, what, you know, the, the bill itself, the way it's written, is that it's assuming that this is meant to be a tool to encourage someone to invest more money in a facility in your community, that you can capture the taxes later on at, at another time period as opposed to a brownfield where it may be 20, 30 years. This one is for a shorter time period. And it's one of about seven different structures that are out there.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Could I have Matt come up to the DM? I know you're pretty excited about telling us the rest of the story. I understand. I know you got aggressive program that you're going to be doing with the building as far as rehabilitation of it and remodeling, but I also see that you got hoops that you gotta jump through with the county and the state if we approve what you're asking. You still got other hoops you gotta jump through. But I think kind of, I think the state might have kind of thrown you under the bus a little bit. Like, let's say, for example, if you have 3,000 members in your group, but you can only claim so many members. Am I kind of right on that, or?
Relative to our capital campaign?
Right.
We wish to raise money from our membership?
Right.
Yes. As securities regulations are currently written, cooperative law in the state of Michigan is somewhat murky. It falls under nonprofit law, but there's-
Could you speak into that microphone a little bit more?
Cooperative law in the state of Michigan is a bit murky. It falls under nonprofit law. But there's nothing to preclude an organization from being a domestic for-profit corporation organized as a co-op, which is what the Marquette Food Co-op is, as are several others in the state of Michigan. So because of that, we don't fall into either of the two state exemptions relative to securities filing requirements, which are expensive, to say the least, and very limiting as well. As the regulations are currently written, we would only be able to raise capital from 30 of our members. They would have to be accredited investors. I think I have one of those among my membership. And it would also limit the amount of money, capital, that we would be able to raise. But recently, we had some success in Lansing, where we are getting a, a special exemption for our efforts. So we have much light at the end of that tunnel. I think that we'll be able to sell preferred shares of our organization to further cap- I think that we'll be able to sell preferred shares of our organization to further capitalize our project through selling shares to many of our members in small dollar increments. So that's going to help. And if I have a moment, I'd like to address Commissioner St. Ange's original question relative to other groups coming. The definition of a commercial rehabilitation district denotes that it be a parcel of three acres in size unless it is a retail food establishment, which is exactly what we are. Then it can be dialed down to the size of a building.
All right, thank you.
I guess that pretty much answers some of my question, but even though the state is helping you in a little bit, they're also handcuffing you also.
At the same time, yes.
At the same time. So this is where I was going. So if we were to approve that recommendation for a public hearing, with your aggressive renovation of the building, you would need some kind of tax. We don't say "abatement," I guess, is what Dennis is saying, but you would need some kind of assistance on this, as far as tax.
That is what we're requesting, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Neme?
I'm not sure if this is a question for Matt or Dennis, but I guess I'm going back to basically the question Commissioner Ryan had, where the taxes currently are 20,000 plus, an abatement will be 7,600. Is that the school tax, the difference between the 20,000 and the 13,000? Or is that by some formula that you're...
My understanding is that the school taxes are the taxes that are collected.
But is that what represents the $7,600 or almost $7,700 abatement from the current tax levy?
Yes, as I understand it, yes.
Okay.
That even confuses things more than, I would think, because...
Well, yeah, I guess it, I don't know why it's put in there. It seems to me it'd be simpler to say the current tax bill is $20,363. That will stay the same. The future improvements will be abated sans the school taxes, because you can't abate the school taxes. They'll still go back to the state.
But that's not what they're saying, and I think we've already got to nail that down. Just, I'm not arguing with you. I'm trying to get to the...
City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me only, let me try to bring back an answer to a couple of these different questions. Commissioner St. Ange had asked, how are these things available? And from a government-to-business standpoint, these are the kind of economic development incentives that the state authorizes through the public acts. MEDC typically has been acting as an agent for many of those. So we've seen brownfields, we're familiar with brownfields, MEGA, MISTHA, we've seen a lot of these different kind of programs. And the applicants, like Mr. Gujon and the co-op, typically go out and receive kind of counseling like that from a local economic development corporation. They come to us when they're looking for jurisdictional sponsorship. So our hats are off to the Food Co-op for finding this opportunity. Some of the confusion comes literally from the fact that they're the first and only ones who've asked the city for something like this. And so we'll provide a clear answer to the commission, certainly as part of this dialogue, and you can expect to have that before any kind of judgment about the results of a public hearing that you might choose to schedule. But these are the, these are the kind of programs that MEDC is focusing on now. Dennis mentioned a moment ago, there's about seven different varieties of this authorized under different public acts. They each have different incentives that they're trying to provide for the redevelopment of property, the economic development of communities. This one in particular is something that, following discussions with the MEDC, with the city, with members of other parts of state government, seemed to fit the desire of the Marquette Food Co-op the best. It seemed to fit in right with what their intended use of the property was going to be. Some feel, some programs you're familiar with, of course, brownfields are very focused on cleaning up and restoring the value of property. Act 255, something that's also under consideration by another local developer, authorizes different kinds of activities. So under Act 255, as compared to this one, the demolition of a facility would be part of the cost that could be recovered by the developer. Act 210 is really focused at taking a building and repurposing it, maybe improving the value of it and the surrounding property. So part of the toolkit that the MEDC brings to economic development, part of what they offer the local businesses, requires a certain amount of specialized expertise to kind of weave through what the most effective programs are, what the most appropriate programs are for a specific interest. And then the city works with the MEDC and the developer to receive the authorizations and complete the application. So what we're looking at right here, in a nutshell, is a business coming in wanting to rehabilitate part of our, actually, part of our DDA area. They need some help doing that and reviewing their application with the MEDC. This is the program that probably most closely fits its needs, and it's something now for the commission to consider maybe scheduling the next step.
Okay.
Yes. I'll get to a bigger point, but on the one point, I just want to say, I doubt that that's the school issue, because actually, what it says is the school gets their money during this process. Not that we don't get their money. But what I, I would just like to say, I'm typically more comfortable with a kind of abatement program where we're abating taxes on the improvements to the building. But I think this is an interesting project, and I think it's worth scheduling a public hearing, getting the kind of information that manager is providing, and giving the community an opportunity for some input into it. So I would move that we schedule a public hearing for May 29 to consider establishing a commercial rehabilitation district at 500 and 502 West Washington Street.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Ryan, any more comments?
No, I think I've said enough.
Okay. Commissioner DePietro?
I'd just like to ask Dennis Stackowitz if there was anything else he would like to add.
No, as City Manager Vida said, we will make sure to clarify the calculations for the commission for the public hearing. In essence, this is a pilt, is the best way to describe it, because you're, the numbers look odd, because you're, you are calculating a commercial rehabilitation tax, which essentially is a payment in lieu of taxes, the way that you would normally understand something like that. But we'll be more than prepared, as City Manager said. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sure, I would support that, this motion then, because I know this is a very aggressive and a very good program. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Let me just suggest something, if I can, perhaps to Mr. Stackowitz, or as applicable. I think it'd be very helpful if we had some kind of a graph that would show us what the tax would be received every year of the abatement, and what would be theoretically received that given periods, assuming we did five years, 10 years, whatever, so you'd have a feel for how this is progressing. Now, it's where we are now, where we would be eventually at, and what the recovery would be from that. Realizing that most of that, much of that, could be notional, I still think it would be a very handy guidepost. Thank you.
Okay. And I would clarify that that graph, I guess from my perspective, should show general fund, not necessarily. I think when we start adding the schools and everyone else, we kind of confuse the issue. What's the impact to the general fund? So Commissioner St. Ange?
Thank you, Your Honor. I find it interesting that an hour ago, we adopted a budget that I think we all commented on was challenging and posed some concerns long-term. And here we are, giving a tax abatement, or at least discussing the prospect of giving a tax abatement. You know, I've been here for a while and always hear how great the community is to live in, and how great people want to be here, and why they want to be here. We spend an incredible amount of money in land and facility improvements, infrastructure improvements, services. At some point, these investments need to pay for themselves. And this may be a unique situation, but this is an existing piece of property that's already on the tax rolls, and we're going to take it off the tax rolls, at least assuming this passes in some context at the next meeting. And I just wonder the value of it. And to, I would argue that to draw similarities to brownfields is a misnomer. Brownfields are underutilized property. This property is being utilized, has been utilized. It's the home for a number of different businesses. It's on Washington Street. It's in our main business district. To give an abatement, I'd just be curious as to what commitments we get from the co-op long-term. You know, the argument in economic development is, somebody comes to town and wants to do something to improve your community, based on some promises. The tax abatement is provided, but at some point in time, when that tax abatement is done, that business may not stay there. And there's no commitments for them to stay. You're not capturing anything more. All you've done is allowed them to redevelop a piece of property for their specific purpose, and it's not to say that that particular purpose is what is going to be best for the next user of the property. Just like the current property owners put it into commerce based on their current needs, not thinking that it was going to be a cooperative grocery store. So there's a lot of questions here, in addition to what has been brought up with regard to the funding aspect of it, but the timeframe, commitments long-term. But again, I would remind the commission, you know, there's a lot of great projects out there, a lot of great organizations, but at the end of the day, we have to balance the budget. And we can't balance the budget if we don't collect the taxes on the limited amount of property that we have in commerce. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I don't disagree with those comments entirely. You know, I think in my five and a half years here, the biggest mistake I felt that this group made was not giving an abatement to Argonics. That was my first year on the commission, and within months, they moved out of town. And that abatement was, as Don alluded to, they weren't going to pay less taxes, they were going to pay less of an increase on what they were paying. I think abatements can work. I think Pioneer Surgical is a great example of that. But having said that, I'm not a fan of lowering anyone's taxes, because I just don't think we need to do that, nor should we. That's a slippery slope. So I'll be interested to see the data that we get. I'm going to happily support this motion to take the next step and have a public hearing and see the details. And we'll see where that, where that ends up. Bob, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'd like to see a recommendation from the staff, too, whether we ought to do one or 10 years, and why?
Okay.
Or anywhere between.
Sure. Commissioner Ryan?
I just, I would agree with Bob, because I think if you're going to do some kind of calculation going forward, you have to know what, it's got to be based on something.
All right. Any other comments? All in favor, say yes. Yes? Opposed?
No.
Pass, motion passes. Next up, number 14, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding sidewalk easement for East Washington Street project. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the construction of East Washington Street is scheduled for August of 2012. The project is grant-funded, with the amount of the grant being $375,000 on an 80-20 split. In order to complete the project, it is necessary to obtain a 92-square-foot easement from the property owners of 101 South Front Street for sidewalk construction on the southwest corner of the intersection with Lake Shore Boulevard. The property owners are requesting that compensation for the easement be in the form of waiving the fee for their existing license obtained for step and planter encroachments at 111 East Spring Street. In addition, there are current encroachments of planters and retaining walls into the East Washington Street right-of-way that should be formalized at this time. Please see attached for drawings of the easement area, current encroachments, and the license for 111 East Spring Street. Fiscal effect, the city would recognize the loss of $100 per year in revenue from the existing license. Recommendation, waive the license fee for 111 East Spring Street and grant a non-fee license for use of the East Washington Street right-of-way as compensation for the easement necessary to complete the East Washington Street project. Alternatives, negotiate a purchase of the easement.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move we approve the recommendation.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
It just seems like this is a neighborly way to get along and a way to get things done without spending more money. I think it's a, it's a good deal.
No additional comments.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, number 15, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding the Cliff's Dows site. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the city recently reviewed a presentation on the remedial alternatives review, RER, from the project team at a work session that was held on March 29, 2012. During the work session, the city commission expressed interest in the recommendation provided that calls for the continuation of groundwater monitoring at the site to further assess the potential effects of sorcery removal actions completed during July of 2011. Subsequent discussion with the project team has provided a recommendation that a letter be sent to the MDEQ informing them of the city's intent, along with a copy of the RER. See attached. Such correspondence does not commit the city to undertake remedial action at this time. Rich Baron of Foley Baron &amp; Metzger has been lead environmental counsel for the city and the primary point of contact with the MDEQ on this project. Tri Media has been the primary consultant on this project for 12 years, and there is one round of groundwater monitoring left on the extension, on the existing contract. Should the commission support the recommendations provided herein, contract extensions with each firm would be concluded. Fiscal effect, none at this time. Subsequent contract extensions will be funded by the Marquette-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, local site remediation revolving fund. Recommendation, authorize Tri Media to send correspondence to the MDEQ advising of the city's intent to continue with addition, with an additional year of groundwater monitoring to further assess the potential effects of sorcery removal actions completed during July of 2011. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner St. Ange?
I'd like to ask staff a question. We had a work session on this a while ago. I'd asked for, and maybe it was sent and I didn't receive it, but I asked for a summary of the costs that the city of Marquette has incurred with regard to the Cliff's Dows site since it was purchased for a dollar. I've contended all along, since I've been here, that we're doing this wrong. My opinion hasn't changed. We're putting lipstick on a pig, and I think there's a better way to do this. So, but I'm curious as to how much money we spend, and I think the public should know how much money we've spent, since we bought this great deal for a dollar.
City manager?
We can certainly retransmit that, and pursuant to the commission's interest, we can post it on the city website.
Sure. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question. We're going to extend these contracts, but what is the cost of the extension going to be? And secondly, I, it's my understanding that the brownfield doesn't pay the legal fees. It only pays the investigation portions.
I can take those. Thank you, Commissioner. The cost is yet to be determined based upon the response from the MDEQ. Part of the, if you, in the RER report, is a recommendation for a reduced number of wells and reduced interval of monitoring. On the, on the high end of things, if we had to do status quo monitoring, as we had been, it's approximately $50,000 to do that. We're hoping to reduce that significantly by the DEQ responding with reduction in interval and number of wells that need to be monitored, because we've thought we've reduced the scope of that quite a bit. The, we have spoken with Mac McClellan of Otwell Mobbi, who is the brownfield, he's the consultant to the Brownfield Redevelopment Finance Authority, and he has given us the opinion that we can use money from the revolving loan fund, specifically from the 381 plan that was done on that site, which is where the money was generated, because it is, it is a response activity, we're responding to the DEQ.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner St. Ange?
How much money is in the, in that account for that particular piece of property?
I do not know the exact amount right now. I can tell you it is in excess of $200,000.
But doesn't that include Founder's Landing as well?
No.
Cliff's Dows on its own has over 200...
Cliff's Dows on its own has over $200,000 available to it.
There was a commission resolution that was passed. I don't recall the exact date, but it dedicated the entire revolving loan fund, and at that time, the amount was approximately $358,000 to the Cliff's Dows site.
Commissioner Ryan?
I have a question. Why is it appropriate for TriMedia to send this letter instead of the city? I just... I'm just asking.
With the letter in itself, if you remember, Rich Baron actually and TriMedia have been working as kind of intermediaries between the city and the MDEQ. Being that TriMedia authored the report, we thought that it was appropriate for them to send the letter on the city's behalf, because most of the communication has been through Rich Baron via TriMedia. Rich has reviewed this and approved it.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Let me move this forward. I will motion to authorize TriMedia to send correspondence to the MDEQ advising of the city's intent to continue with an additional year of groundwater monitoring to further assess the potential effects of the source area removal actions completed during July of 2011.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, anything?
Well, as we remember from our work session of several months back, when we spent a fair amount of detailed time on the whole issue of the Cliff's Dows property, a number of options were presented, all of them with very, very large price tags. And the least expensive of those options is to do the... continue the monitoring. And certainly, from the indications, I think fairly said, that we've had, we would likely be able to do that at a much lower level than we have previously done. The advantage of continuing to do that at the reduced cost, of course, is saving some money, but perhaps more importantly, determining and continue to see what's happening on the property as a result of the removal actions we did previously. And ultimately guiding us to making the very best decision that we can regarding the eventual reuse of the property, and what further investment we need to make. So, I think this is a very prudent action on the part of the city at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything to add?
Yeah, I... Commissioner St. Ange may be right. You know, I think we have to reach a point in time where we determine, can this property be restored at some reasonable cost or not? But I guess it's still, in my mind, doesn't let us walk away from a responsibility to the Michigan DEQ to maintain some monitoring on the property as to what's going on. Now, hopefully, at some point, if we decide that this property cannot be put back into use, you know, we can begin to walk away from some of those expenses as well. But I haven't heard anyone present an alternative to cooperation with the MDEQ at this point.
Commissioner Schneider?
Sure. The motion on the floor right now is to authorize TriMedia to correspond with the MDEQ, and I'm in support of that. If we're not doing anything to remediate the site, then we definitely need to be doing monitoring, you know, for buying the property for a dollar. I think that's something that we're responsible for. But the more I start to understand the project, the more I'm starting to side with Commissioner St. Ange, that we could spend money for 10, 20, 30 years to just monitor it, monitor it, and monitor it, and keep throwing money at it. But at some point, we're just going to have to choose one of those expensive options, as far as remediation, and do something with it. You know, I know I've only been on just under two years, but I think we really need to start taking action towards identifying what we can afford to do, and doing it, and putting that property into use.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would only comment that it is incumbent on us to find out what action we can take, the best action we can take, in full concert with the DEQ, because we cannot walk away from what the requirements of the DEQ are. So, by monitoring and doing it, especially in the fashion that we have motion to do so, would give us certainly the best opportunity to not only define the problem, but better define the solution. So, while ultimately we'll have to do something, that something has not yet been identified in any course beneficial official manner yet, acceptable to the DEQ. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comment, call a question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries. Oh, let's get to something less controversial. Centerline street painting.
Remember, we have taken centerlines up in the past, so... Totally.
I know. That was tongue-in-cheek, so... Number 16, report and recommendation from the city manager, BP 1210, centerline painting. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the city of Marquette must perform yearly maintenance on lane and intersection markings on streets throughout the city. Approximately 25 lineal miles of street markings and 180 intersections have been identified as being in need of repainting. Bid specification requested bids for epoxy paints only. The epoxy paint is a more superior product that holds up during the winter plowing season, and is expected to last two to three years longer than the regular waterborne paint that has been used in the past. Bid documents were advertised and sent to known contractors that perform this type of service. Two contractors responded to the bid... bid request, excuse me. The quantity of work has been adjusted from the original bid specification to match the available budgeted amount. A summary of the bid unit prices is attached. Fiscal effect, the fiscal year 1213 operating budget allocated $118,170 in the major street fund for this project. The FY 1112 operating budget has approximately $20,000 in the major street fund remaining. Approximately $16,000 will be funded through the DDA for crosswalks in the DDA district. Recommendation, award the bid in amount not to exceed $154,170 at the unit prices bid for centerline and intersection painting to PK Contracting Incorporated of Troy, Michigan, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners... Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, I move that we award the bid in the amount not to exceed $154,170. The unit prices bid for centerline and intersection painting to PK Contracting Incorporated of Troy, Michigan, being the low bid and meeting specifications.
All right, thank you. Do we have... Second?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Commissioner Neme seconds. Commissioner Schneider?
Glad to see it's being done, because I often find that a few yards after an intersection, I'm driving over the yellow line in some places, not recognizing exactly what section of the street I'm in. So, glad to see that it's being done, and absolutely amazed at how expensive some of these things can be.
Right. Commissioner Neme?
I have no further comments, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Number 17, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding Lakeview Arena locker room flooring replacement. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, at its May 24, 2008 meeting, the city commission approved moving forward with issuing a $1,300,000 bond for capital improvements at Lakeview Arena. All the original projects marked as high priority have been completed. Due to the favorable bid climate, the projects came in considerably under consultant cost estimate, resulting in excess bond proceeds. The three-year window for using the Lakeview Arena bond proceeds is nearing expiration and must be encumbered to... encumbered in May. Staff has identified three additional projects that would enhance the building's operation, improve public appeal, and reduce year... excuse me, reduce yearly maintenance cost. These projects include locker room flooring, additional high-efficiency lighting upgrades, and ice system electrical upgrades. The existing flooring in Russell Arena locker rooms is worn out and in need of replacement. Bid documents were advertised and sent to four local vendors that perform flooring installation services. Three vendors responded. The bids were opened on May 3, 2012, and McCabe's Flooring of Marquette, Michigan submitted the low bid at $22,328.44. Fiscal effect, approximately $162,000 of the $1,300,000 that was approved and bonded for in FY 0809 for Lakeview Arena renovations is available. Recommendation, award the bid in an amount not to exceed $22,328.44 for flooring replacement in the Russell Arena locker rooms at Lakeview Arena to McCabe's Flooring of Marquette, Michigan, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners... Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we approve the recommendation, award the bid in amount not to exceed $22,328.44 for flooring replacement in the Russell Arena locker rooms at Lakeview Arena to McCabe's Flooring of Marquette, Michigan, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Thank you.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro, anything to add?
Just what they had recommended due to the material being wore out and time to replace it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
No further comment.
Any further comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 18, report and recommendation from the city manager, BP 1215, Lakeview Arena locker room and hallway lighting replacement. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, at its March 24, 2008 meeting, the city commission approved moving forward with issuing a $1,300,000 bond for capital improvements at Lakeview Arena. All the original projects marked as high priority have been completed. Due to the favorable bid climate, the projects came in considerably under the consultant's cost estimate, resulting in excess bond proceeds. The three-year window for using the Lakeview Arena bond proceeds is nearing expiration and must be encumbered in May. Staff has identified three additional projects that would enhance the building's operation, improve public appeal, and reduce yearly maintenance cost. These projects include locker room flooring, additional high-efficiency lighting upgrades, and ice system electrical upgrades. The existing lighting in the Russell Arena locker rooms and hallways is inefficient and are in need of replacement. Bid documents were advertised and sent to five local vendors that perform lighting installation services. Five vendors responded. The bids were opened on May 3, 2012, with Mandel Electric of Marquette, Michigan, with the low bid of $23,790. Fiscal effect, approximately $162,000 of the $1,300,000 that was approved and bonded for in FY 0809 for Lakeview Arena renovations is available. Recommendation, award the bid in amount not to exceed $23,790 for lighting replacement in the locker rooms and hallways at Lakeview Arena to Mandel Electric of Marquette, Michigan, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I move we award the bid in amount not to exceed $23,790 for lighting replacement in the locker rooms and hallways at Lakeview Arena to Mandel Electric, Marquette, Michigan, being the low bid and meeting specifications.
All right, thank you.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Neme seconds. Commissioner Ryan, any additional comments?
We're almost out of time and out of money in that bond issue that was issued for the arena, and I'll just take it that staff is picking out the best ways to spend that money, and that these are truly the best uses, and it will soon be gone.
Commissioner Neme?
I think this will make for a brighter arena.
A brighter future in Marquette.
That's right. Any other comments? Commissioner St. Ange? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. We are through our agenda, and we are to public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person, and again, give your name and address at the lectern if you would wish to make comments.
Thank you. Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. The bog walk timeline was posted as promised, but it did you no service. It claims that at the October 25, 2010 meeting, the watershed partnership received a letter of support to restore approximately 10 coastal acres at Prescott Park. Oddly, I could not find this item on the agenda or in the minutes. On your October 29, 2010 consent agenda was an item for wetland mitigation with no mention of where. A February 12, 2011 article reads, "The city will restore a quarter acre of wetlands on-site and two additional acres near Prescott Bog." The article focuses on the McClellan extension with no mention of where near the bog. A March 30, 2011 notice of public hearing mentions only the McClellan extension, as did three other entries on the timeline, April 8, 2011, and two entries on April 13, with no mention of the Prescott Bog Walk. Last August 31, a DEQ public notice mentioned McClellan extension on-site wetland fill and Prescott off-site wetland mitigation. How few people saw that. All these 21 timeline items, and everything hinges on one reading at your meeting of December 12, 2011. The agenda read, "Letter of credit for McClellan extension on-site wetland mitigation and Prescott off-site wetland mitigation." Other than this description, no additional mention of Prescott appears in the December 12 minutes. And all your other timeline items either occurred behind the scenes, or they emphasized the McClellan extension. Any mention of the Prescott Bog was a McClellan add-on, never a separate item. We need to review the audio record of December 12 to determine how much emphasis was placed on what. It's clear that the public process was as compromised as the execution of the project. April 9, you heard reliable testimony that the plan was made only public on the website 24 hours after bulldozers first rolled. Others accused you of starting with the worst possible site for migratory birds. Had you provided more publicity and detail of your proposal, experts might have warned you to first reestablish the habitat at either the Shire's Pool or in the open area that's full of invasive species, so the birds weren't left without adequate habitat. Furthermore, no survey for sensitive species could have been conducted that early in spring, and no silt protectors until a week after excavation began? A trained biologist would know these facts. Another citizen's suggestion that you hire a forester instead of an excavator for such an important project was to ridicule your manner of business. This is what happens when you follow the advice of the DEQ, an agency that you've been warned to beware of. Nope, you just let them keep fooling you into believing that they know what they're doing. Please be objective. Bureaucracies rush in to get the job done, often without rhyme or reason. This board has acted the same way, hence the tone of these comments. Your timeline does not suffice. An April 10, 2012 article entitled "Residents oppose wetland work" quotes Mr. Keevila as saying, "So, here we are. We can't stop it at this point. Now, we have to look going forward. How do we get more involved?" End quote. His own comment substantiates the allegation that you're not placing due emphasis on public involvement. You were recently told of the forums the commission once held on hot-topic issues. Many people attended and showed interest. But invariably, the commission rushed off in different incomprehensible directions on virtually every lakeshore parcel, including Lakeshore Site, Flounders Landing, Cliff's Dows, and the Citadel, plus the Marquette Commons. People are tired of wasting their time on a commission that decides based upon who says what, instead of on the validity of what is said. This is why it's upsetting to hear Mr. Ryan complain on April 9, that people don't come to public forums. The reason is, they don't feel heard, and their untold hours of past participation were wasted. They'd rather spend their time where they can make a difference. April 9, none of you mentioned why the bog wasn't handled as a separate agenda item. Listing it separately would have helped get the word out. This oversight occurred after the commission was asked on several occasions to entertain a public process prior to any alterations to our green space. Here's yet another situation where, had you heeded the advice given at this lectern, you could have averted frustration for yourselves and the public. By the next time you mishandle an item, the bird watchers will be out birdwatching, and a whole new group of distraught citizens will be on hand, hoping you'll learn from their experience. And on and on.
Good, Mr. Verito. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into commissioner comments. We'll start on my left. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess the only comment I have tonight is, this Wednesday, the charter commission will be holding a public hearing on the completed charter. It will be probably the last time for the public to comment on it. The charter is available on the city website for people to look at, and if you want to have input in the charter, Wednesday is the day to do it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I'd definitely like to repeat Commissioner Neme's comments, that if you want to get involved in the process of how our city works, the city charter is a really good place to start. So, if people have the chance to make it to that meeting, that would be great. Something that I wasn't planning on commenting on until public comment is... Something that I wasn't planning on commenting on until public comment is, is our public communication process. A lot of what Mr. Verito said this evening actually kind of strikes a chord with me. I think that, that our staff and our commission has gone leaps and bounds to be more public, more open, more transparent than I've seen the city be in 15 years. But still for people to be blindsided or surprised, um, I put the blame on us just as much as I put it on them, and I think that, that it all starts with us as far as policy leadership and how we open up to, to our community, to the citizens that voted us in, to make sure that they're aware of things the same way that we are aware. I know that we're constantly struggling with apathy, but I think that it's our role to find ways of reducing some of those barriers, um, so that people can find out more about what's going on so that we don't end up with issues like the bogwok. Other than that, there is the Business Alliance for Local Living Economies Conference coming up this week. Commissioner DePetro and I attended the last one in, uh, Bellingham, Washington. This year, I have been awarded a grant by the Kellogg Foundation to attend, and it's going to be in Grand Rapids. So I'm leaving tomorrow morning to network with, um, with local economy folks to kind of talk about what they're doing in their communities, and I'm really glad that it's in our state and look forward to networking.
Great. Commissioner St. Ange?
Uh, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you. This week we had the news that President Wong is leaving Northern and going out to San Francisco to assume the presidency of, I think it's San Francisco State University. Certainly he will be a great loss to not only the university, but I think to, to Marquette and, and the entire Upper Peninsula community. And I, I wish him well in that. Couple of quick items if we could. When I was a kid growing up on the New Jersey Shore, a beach fire during the summer was always a great thing. And the way we would do that was we would go to the local office and we'd get a permit to have a fire, and we posted a surety deposit for that, and then we went out and had our beach fire. And we cleaned it up the next day, or we forfeited whatever our deposit was at the time. I really like the city to take a good look at how we can establish that in Marquette. I think that's a great tradition that has, has long been apparently here and no longer done, but if we were to assign an area, and I'll say the Dog Beach, for example, uh, might be an appropriate place, but, uh, I do think we should take a good look at that and, and see if we can't make it work for a whole generation of kids that can have the same experience that, that perhaps we did. And I would ask city administration to look at one more item, too. For, for the four years I've been on the commission and for probably three or four years prior to that with the Harbor Advisory Committee, every year we asked to have the tires removed from the Matson Park wall. There's 13, I think, large truck tires that are moored up against the cleats there. They have not been used since the last coal boat came into that dock. They're unsightly. They no longer serve any practical purpose. There's not a boat, be it small, large, commercial, or private, that mores against that wall that does not bring its own appropriately sized vendors. And as we look forward to Marquette hosting more and more events in, in Matson Park, many of them international in, in nature, particularly, for example, the, the Model As coming in this summer, uh, that those waters will be used by the National Ensign Regatta this year. Again, national events, and we have the embarrassment of these huge truck tires, that in six years, we have not managed to get one loader, one 20-foot chain, two men, and a short dump truck down to take off in an hour. And I, I just would ask administration to please consider a way that we could accomplish that, let's say in the next several weeks before we have the, the National Ensign Regatta here. That's a good aim point for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I don't really have any serious issues tonight, but, um, I took a very nice walk this morning. This was a kind of a UP summer day, and, uh, I'm sure a lot of other people noticed that, too. But I took a walk along one of my favorite routes. I parked my car at, uh, Picnic Rocks and walked to Founders Landing and back. And I, and I, as I walked along, you know, I, I just noticed certain things. I noticed the coaster, too. You know, it's, it's great to have this landmark sitting at, at water's edge, as far as I'm concerned. The Isle Royal Queen was there, and this, you know, both of these ships are going to give both residents and visitors to our area better chances to enjoy Lake Superior, which is, as far as I'm concerned, our greatest asset. Went down to the boardwalk, and, uh, you know, people are enjoying that. I think it's a real asset. Kind of dreamed about the day we might have a fishing pier as well. You know, I think that's, uh, again, opportunities for people to, uh, enjoy Lake Superior. Even the motel, you know, I, I think this is again going to provide, uh, a foundation for our downtown. It's going to draw people to the downtown area and, uh, again, give people a chance to better interact with, uh, with Lake Superior. I know beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but as far as I'm concerned this morning, it was very nice and, and very beautiful, walking along Lake Superior and enjoying what was there, so. Uh, I think we can be very grateful for, for that. I think, I think this commission has helped to make some of those things happen, and I think a lot of other people have, too. So it's, it's, it's again, evidence of a real team effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DePetro?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to congratulate Assistant Park and Recreation Director Doug Smith, who will celebrate his fifth anniversary on May 24. And in honor, uh, proclamation of Public Works Recognition Week, I did receive a lot of very positive comments from the public on the excellent job that the city did on the spring cleanup for the brush and the leaves that were placed on the curb site and the streets being swept. So they would like to have this, uh, all the compliments I've received passed on to the Public Works crew for doing a very good job on the spring cleanup. Also, if I could ask, uh, our Community Development Director Dennis Stackowetz, if he could give us update on Founders Boardwalk on the fence and lighting issue?
Certainly. Previously was inquiry from the city commission on when we could get the boardwalk open. There are a number of items that were remaining, primarily dealing with safety for the community, the completion of the bike path, uh, extension of electrical conduit for the lighting, and taking care of the fencing issues down there. We sent correspondence out to the developers. We received a response from Barry Poles, and it looks like most of the items will be done by May 18th. Um, we're still going to have a construction fence around the bike path till the asphalt plants are open. We expect that to be around the end of May, to get the asphalt plants open and finish that bike path. But the rest of the items look like they're going, at least we've been told, they'll be completed by May 18th.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'd like to thank city manager Bill Fied, department heads and staff on working so diligently on the budget for 2012, 2013. I believe most of the commissioners were very pleased with the work that was done by everybody. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. I've got a challenge to the rest of my commissioners here. Boards and committees, we've never been closer to filling them, and, uh, I want, I want to challenge all of us commissioners to go out and try to find someone, recruit someone to fill one of those spots. You know, bring them an application if you think they're qualified or would be a good fit to a different board, and encourage them to serve. Several of these boards or committees take very little time investment. Some are very, you know, uh, demanding. The Planning Commission would be one, but there are several that don't take much of a, a commitment, so. That's my challenge out there. And then, uh, the other thing is today I got to do something I, I kind of enjoy, um, doing, and that was meeting a bunch of, uh, school kids. We had a whole bunch of second graders from Sandy Knoll here at Commission Chambers learning about city government, and, uh, two different groups, uh, filled the room and took questions, and I'll tell you, some of them are very interesting. And, you know, one had some concerns on the McClellan Avenue extension and, and why it needed to be done, and I thought, boy, that's pretty impressive from a second grader. So, uh, the future is bright here in Marquette. That's all I've got. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Nothing further this evening.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.